Ms. Rydel, would you call roll, please?
Thank you, Chair Wiscom.
Chair Wiscom? Here.
Vice Chair Jordan?
Here.
Commissioner Campanella?
Here.
Commissioner Higgins?
Here.
Commissioner Lodge?
Here.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Here.
Commissioner Thompson? Absent. Commissioner Thompson is absent. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rydel. Okay, we'll move on to preliminary matters. This is item number two, two A, requests for continuances, withdrawals, postponements, or addition of ex-agenda items. Ms. DeBussch?
Chair Wiscom, we have none.
Okay, and how about B, announcement and appeals?
Just wanted to make a couple announcements. Things that happened at City Council on Tuesday. They introduced the ordinance amendments for the inclusionary rental housing, so that will go back for a second reading next Tuesday. And they also adopted the Coastal Commission's suggested modifications to the updated coastal land use plan. So staff will now be submitting back to Coastal Commission to get their determination on the legal adequacy, and then hopefully that will be officially adopted very shortly.
Great. Thank you very much, and congratulations again to staff on the LCP update. I think that's great. Okay. Item number two C is comments from members of the public pertaining to items not on the agenda. Do we have any speakers for items not on the agenda? Okay. Anna Marie Gott, come on up. These are both...oh, no. Okay, that's for Yana Nolly. This is for...okay, welcome. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. I wanted to remind you that you have a pedestrian master plan. Apparently, the staff has forgotten that you have that because there have been a number of projects that have shown up at ABR where sidewalks were actually required, but for some reason, the applicant did not have a sidewalk on their plans, and they instead were going to be building something where the right-of-way is supposed to be. I think it is very important that before anything is scheduled for any of your design boards, that they actually receive a document that tells them any issues of a current design. With regards to 7/11 North Milpiss, if they'd had a project, a pre-application team report prior to their first review, they would have known what was missing. If those same members had seen the pre-application review for 533 East Mitchell Turena, they would have known an entire sidewalk was missing, and they would have known that there was a setback required, none of which was shown on the plans. And they had two meetings scheduled before they had the second meeting pulled because I told them about it. On Monday, I went to the ABR again, and at 1260 Coast Village Circle, I believe it is, there is a medical office that apparently years ago had a planter in front of the building because there was no sidewalk. Now there is a sidewalk on the other property, and they want to build a planter exactly where the sidewalk is, and no one informed the ABR that there should be a sidewalk there. Now, I don't know what we're doing in terms of trying to give public property away, or if we are just failing to do our jobs before we put projects in front of our ABR and HLC boards, but whatever it is, we need help because if you're trying to create a walkable, pedestrian-friendly city that is accessible to not only people without disabilities but with disabilities, we are failing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I don't see any other speaker slips for general public comment, so with that, I'll close general public comment, and we will move on to item number three, new item, and it's the application of Trish Allen of Suzanne Elidge Planning and Permitting Services, agent for the Wright Partners, property owners of 301 East Yana Nolly Street.
I'll just first...
APN 071-630-005, in Zones M1 Light Manufacturing, SP2 Cabrillo Plaza Specific Plan Number Two, and SD3 Coastal Overlay with Local Coastal Program Land Use Plan Designation Industrial. Discretionary applications required for this project are: number one, a development plan for 33,451 square feet of non-residential development from the Cabrillo Plaza Specific Plan area; two, a front setback modification to allow a trellis in the required front setback along Garden Street; three, a front setback modification to allow a trellis in the required front setback along East Yana Nolly Street; and four, a coastal development permit to allow the proposed development in the appealable jurisdiction of the city's coastal zone. So with that, we will commence. We'll have a presentation from staff, followed by any questions from commissioners for staff, or we can wait till after the presentation by the applicant also, and then we will open up public comment, and then it will be back to the commission for additional questions, and then eventually a discussion. So, thank you, Ms. DeBussch.
Thank you. The staff presentation will be given by Kelly Broaddus.
Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Broaddus.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Chair Wiscom. As you said, the project being presented today is at 301 East Yana Nolly, and here's a slide showing the general vicinity of the project. You had already mentioned the zoning, M1, and the local coastal plan, land use designation of industrial. Here's a slide showing the aerial photo, and you can see that the uses on the site are quite industrial. The freeway, 101, is to the north. Garden Street is on the bottom of the slide to the left, and then the Laguna Channel is the green belt that you see to the right of the project site. The proposed project consists of the construction of approximately 33,000 square feet within two separate buildings. Building one would be one-story with a maximum height of 32 feet 4 inches and would contain approximately 25,300 square feet. And building two would be a two-story, non-residential building of about 8,000 square feet. 138 parking spaces are provided. The project also includes restoration of Laguna Channel and remediation of contaminated soil on-site, and let's see, what did I say there? Creating of about 9,000 cubic yards of cut due to the presumption that the soil on-site is contaminated. Vehicular access to the development would be provided via a new driveway on East Yana Nolly Street, kind of down here on East Yana Nolly Street, and you can see the two separate buildings on this slide. Existing driveways on Yana Nolly Street for this project would be eliminated, and the project includes sidewalk dedication in order to provide sidewalk and parkway consistency with the master plan along East Yana Nolly. The project development will also be setback 50 feet from the top of bank of Laguna Channel, which is located along the site's eastern property line, and a detailed habitat restoration plan is proposed within the 50-foot setback from the top of bank along the channel and within the properties of the project site. All existing uses on the site that we saw in the previous aerial photo will be eliminated. And just to give you an image of the proposed elevations, which the architect will go into more detail later, here are the elevations for building one, and these are the elevations for the smaller building, the two-story building, building two. As you also stated earlier, the required applications are a development plan for non-residential floor area, two front setback modifications for a new trellis at the corner of Garden and Yana Nolly Streets, and a coastal development permit to allow the development in the appealable jurisdiction of the coastal zone. The subject parcel is part of the Cabrillo Plaza Specific Plan, known as SP2, which was adopted by the city in 1983, and it governs the development of these parcels between Garden and Highway 101. In this slide, you can see that the subject parcel is referenced as Area D in the specific plan, and it allows uses per the M1 Zone. The SBT requires that the applicant dedicate land for construction of the extension of the Garden Street from Yana Nolly to Cabrillo, and the extension of Yana Nolly Street from Garden to the Laguna Channel undercrossing, and this was done in 1997, well in advance of any private developments on the specific plan site. Area D, the project we're talking about today, is limited to 45,000 square feet of non-residential development, and only 25% of that floor area can be used as office. An earlier version of today's project was reviewed conceptually by the Planning Commission in 2015, and this is valid to mention in order to demonstrate the significant changes that the applicant has made and why. And that project consisted of almost 45,000 net square feet of a two-story commercial building in the northeast corner of Garden and Yana Nolly, and a 5,100-square-foot roof deck, and a 25-foot setback from top of bank was proposed at that time. And here's a slide showing the entire one-massing of the building, and here's the slides showing the elevations. Since then, the project has been changed significantly in response to comments from the Historic Landmarks Commission and the Planning Commission. The square footage was reduced by about 11,000 square feet. It was broken up into two separate buildings to break up the massing. The buildings are set back significantly from the street frontage to improve mountain views. The roof deck has been eliminated, and the top of bank from Laguna Channel has been increased to 50 feet. So staff did an analysis for zoning compliance with all of our zoning ordinance rules, and the building height in the SP2 Zone is limited to two stories or 30 feet. Or applicants could also choose to do what's called a height setback relation study to allow taller buildings that don't intrude into the views from the beach or from Cabrillo Boulevard. So the applicant, in this case, the applicant chose to do the latter, and they provided a height line study. Both of the buildings are proposed to be 30 feet, but as demonstrated, the proposed buildings would not be visible from Cabrillo Boulevard or the beach. Therefore, the project complies with the height limits of the SP2 Zone. Title 28 requires both retail and office uses to be parked at one space per 250, and restaurant uses would be at the greater of one space per 250 square feet, or one space for every three seats. Since there's no identified tenant for this project, parking is being calculated at one space for 250 square feet for all the buildings. 134 spaces would be proposed, and they're providing 138, so that's consistent with the parking ordinance. In addition to satisfying the zoning ordinance, the SP2 Zone requires that provided parking shall meet peak parking demands. A shared parking study was provided by Associated Transportation Engineers to analyze the project's peak parking demand, and the parking study concluded that 138 parking spaces would be sufficient for a variety of uses and scenarios on-site. So the staff finds that 138 parking spaces are sufficient at this time. The front setback modifications that we referred to earlier is the M1 Zone doesn't have any setbacks for non-residential buildings, but the SP2 does require 20-foot front setback. The main structures for this project do comply with the required setbacks. However, a proposed trellis is being proposed at the corner. The HLC, Historic Landmarks Commission, was supportive of situating the building to the rear of the site and allowing the parking to be located close to the street. At the request of the HLC, in order to soften the appearance of the parking lot, the applicant is proposing a small pedestrian plaza with a trellis at the corner. This trellis would encroach into the front setbacks, and therefore it requires modifications. And at their meeting of May 16, 2018, the HLC was supportive of the modifications and stated that the trellis in the setback is appropriate to the architecture, and it's an asset to the sidewalk experience. The findings to approve these two modifications are that the project's consistent with the purposes and intent of the zoning ordinance, and it's necessary to secure an appropriate improvement on the lot. Also, the project requires a development plan for the non-residential square footage, and the findings for a development plan are that the project complies with the zoning ordinance, it's consistent with the principles of sound community planning, it will not have a significant adverse impact on aesthetics or community character based on the project compatibility analysis criteria, and that it's consistent with the policies of the City of Santa Barbara Traffic Management Plan. So those are the findings that the Planning Commission will need to make in order to approve the coastal, I mean, the development plan. And for the coastal development permit, the Planning Commission will have to find that the project is consistent with all applicable policies of the city's local coastal plan and all implementing guidelines and provisions of the code. The project did go to the Historic Landmarks on several occasions, and the applicant responded to HLC's concerns by reducing the height and size of the building and placing the building toward the rear of the site. The HLC stated that they greatly appreciated the efforts that the applicant has made to locate and reconfigure the buildings toward the rear of the site, which preserves and enhances views of the mountains, and they supported placing the parking in front and a trellis at the corner to create a street-friendly presence and to screen the parking lot. The compatibility analysis criteria were made at their last meeting, and it was stated that the architecture is compatible with the city charter, and it's a commendable design. The site bulk and scale are acceptable, and the applicant has modified the site to maximize mountain views from the street and the neighborhood. The open space is adequately and sensitively handled, as is the creek restoration, which is a significant part of the project. For today, the issues that should be focused on are land use, and there are potential issues related to traffic and loss of industrial land, and visual resources, and the habitat protection of the Laguna Channel. The Coastal Act, the local coastal plan, and the general plan contain many policies that mandate the projects protect the environmentally sensitive habitat areas, and that they cite development in order to prevent future degradation. So a thorough list of these policies is provided in the staff report, which we can go through if anybody has any questions. And I wanted to show you this slide, which shows that the Habitat Protection Plan proposes to restore the portion of Laguna Channel that runs along the eastern boundary. It includes earthwork to lay back the western bank to have it at a less steep grade, and it will stabilize the channel slopes and remove non-native species, and they also increase setback from 25 to 50 feet. So therefore, the project can be found consistent with those policies of the general plan and the local coastal plan. There are also policies put in place to protect scenic and visual qualities of coastal areas, to cite development appropriately to protect views to along and from the ocean, to be visually compatible with the character of the community, and where feasible, to restore and enhance visual quality in degraded areas. So the project minimizes the loss of views by placing the larger building toward the rear away from the front of the street, and the HLC found that design was visually compatible with the surrounding areas and would be an enhancement to the project site, and that the plan maximizes mountain views. So the project can be found consistent with these policies. Also, the applicant provided visual simulations as part of the staff report, and here's some slides showing, on the left, the project site now before the buildings, and on the right, from this angle on Garden Street after the visual sims. This is closer as you reach the corner, and here you can see the proposed trellis on the corner. And this is as you're driving east on Yana Nolly Street towards the project. And here's a picture of the story poles that we viewed at the site visit on Tuesday, and the architect will go into these views in more detail. Regarding land use, the land use element has policies that seek to preserve manufacturing uses in the M1 Zone. The proposed uses on this site are consistent with zoning under Title 28 because of pyramid zoning, which allows commercial uses in the M1 Zone. Under Title 30, which is not active yet in the coastal zone, the proposed uses would be allowed only as accessory uses to a primary industrial use. If approved today, the proposed uses...
I'm sorry, could you repeat that last part I didn't hear?
Sure. Under Title 30, which is not active yet in the coastal zone, the proposed uses would be allowed as accessory uses to a primary industrial uses. If approved today, though, the proposed uses on this site will become legal non-conforming when Title 30 is adopted in a couple of years. However, the specific plan for this area anticipated commercial uses when it was adopted in 1983. So the Planning Commission should consider this policy, however, given the uses specified in SP2 and Title 28, which is the current zoning for this area of the city. Staff finds that the project can be found consistent with this policy. The circulation element also encourages the use of alternative modes of transportation, especially non-motorized options in and around the coastal zone. And the project includes widening of the sidewalk to be consistent with the pedestrian master plan, and updated striping on the street to improve access to and from the site, and they're also providing sufficient bike parking. And for these reasons, the project can be found consistent with the circulation element of the general plan. Staff conducted a very thorough environmental analysis of this project, and in doing that, we reviewed visual, biological, cultural resources, air quality for short-term construction, hazardous materials on the site, noise, and traffic congestion. So in conclusion, the environmental analysts found that there were no project-specific impacts associated with this project, and it is determined that the project can be found exempt under 15183 when a project is consistent with the EIR that was prepared for the general plan. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the project and make the findings in Section 10 of the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval in Exhibit A. And also, we did have one revised condition which was provided to you at the beginning of the meeting regarding, I can't remember what number it was. It starts on the first page of the conditions. B2.
Can you give us the synopsis of...
I'll let Allison do that.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Wiscom, you did receive a letter from the applicant requesting a change to that condition, B2, and so staff has worked with the applicant to come up with a condition that the city is satisfied with as well as the applicant. And basically, it's just more general about requiring compliance with our traffic policies and not identifying specific uses, and I think this helps in terms of long-term management of the condition because who knows what uses will be out there in 10 or 15 years, so, thank you.
That's great. I'm pleased to see that that was resolved. Yes, thank you very much for doing that. Okay.
And that concludes staff's presentation, and we're here for questions. And we have Steve House from the Historic Landmarks Commission...
Yes. Mr. House, would you like to come on up? You have some comments? Some input for us?
Well, I have to be careful.
Oh, you're getting a word of caution. I don't know. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
All friendly. I don't really have anything to add. As has been stated, we like the project very much. We like that they set it back from the street, which minimizes mountain obstruction, and therefore the pergola along the street frontage was a necessary mitigation because the parking moved to the street. So we think it's a great project, and I can answer any questions if you have any.
Did that pass muster for you, Mr. Cornell?
Anything else you'd like me to add?
Thank you, Mr. House. Do any of my fellow commissioners have questions for our HLC commissioner? No? Okay.
Okay.
Seeing none, thank you very much for coming, and thank you. Really appreciate your input. Okay. We are moving on to the applicant's presentation, and you requested and received 30 minutes.
Thank you.
So you have 30 minutes, and...
Let me set go. Thanks for the extra time.
Welcome, Ms. Allen. If you'd introduce yourself so everyone knows who you are. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Trish Allen. I'm with Suzanne Elidge Planning and Permitting. I really wanted to start out, and we're really pleased to be here this afternoon. It's been a long time coming, so we're pretty excited that we're here before you this afternoon. I did want to introduce the project team. The Wright family is here in council chambers to observe the hearing, as well as our architect, Brian Cornell, landscape architect Courtney Miller, who will be handling the bulk of the presentation, both of them. Our civil engineer, Mike Cassessi, is here from Mac Design. Our, I'm not sure your technical title, geologist Walt Hammond from Rincon Consultants is here. He handled the soil remediation component of our project. Mary Carroll, our biologist, is here from Arcadis, and Scott Shell is here from Associated Transportation Engineers. So we are here, if you have any technical questions, we've got the folks here to answer those for you. Of course, Suzanne is here with me, too. Sorry, Suzanne Elidge. I wanted to reiterate what Ms. DeBussch explained about the condition. You received our letter along with staff requesting that revision, and just wanted to reiterate and thank staff. It was a lot of hard work leading up to right now to get draft language that is acceptable to us. I just wanted to affirm that. And from there, just turn it over to Brian to get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Welcome, Mr. Cornell.
Thank you, Trish. Thank you, Chair Wiscom, members of the Planning Commission. We are happy to be here. I've been working on this project since 2012, so it's nice to finally be here, and we've been through a lot of revisions, which I'll go through. I think we're going to be able to do this, hopefully, in less than our allotted time, which would be nice. Kelly has done a wonderful job, so there may be some repetition, and Allison, of course. So starting with this, I love history, and so it's kind of fun to think about. Here is the site currently today from an aerial. This is back in 1853, so it is interesting to see how most of this area was the estero. This is 1928. This is before you bought the property, isn't it, Bill? I'm pretty sure. But it's interesting, you can really see here clearly a few things. Laguna Channel, you can see is a very definitive engineered channel. You can see the old racetrack, the remnants of it. You can actually see in the right-hand side there the old roundabout. This, of course, is right after the earthquake, so the campus of the Potter Hotel there in the sort of lower left is there, but of course, there's no building. So it's fun to look at these old slides. This is 1953, the year I was born, and of course, the freeway has just been put through, and you can see it's pretty much a vacant parcel. 1995, so this is in advance of the extension of Garden Street. Bill Wright, by the way, did buy this property in 1978, and the specific plan followed in 1983. So here's a little blow-up of the site today, and then increasing to be rational to our plans, 3.16 acres, as has been mentioned. Again, history is always good to understand. This was back in 2006. Lindvig &amp; Minor was working on a plan for the site, and this is our previous design in 2015. Both of these, of course, as Kelly mentioned, had 25-foot setbacks from Laguna Channel. And so one of the most important things of this final redesign was to propose the 50-foot riparian buffer, which you'll hear more about. And this, then, is our current site plan. One of the things that we were asked to do is some analysis of future compliance with energy codes and whatnot. We've actually been able to demonstrate that the roof can accommodate solar that will essentially power this building and allow it to be... essentially power this building and allow it to be net zero in the future. And I'm going to let Courtney go through a lot of the site features after I present the basic project. So 25,000 square feet approximately of the one-story building, 8,000 two-story building, and 138 parking spaces, along with 33 bike parking spaces. Truck circulation has been a really important part of designing this site, so if you'll pardon the little animation, we've designed this so that it can accommodate pretty much as large a truck as is allowed in the California highways. So the trucks have to come in and then back into this loading dock area, and then they will exit out and back into this area, and then go back out again. Isn't that fun? It's kind of like a little pong game. So looking at the views of the site, which Kelly sort of previewed for you, this is that trellis, which, again, I'm going to let Courtney talk more about, but it was an important, once we moved the building back off the street, really to comply with our pedestrian master plan and urban design guidelines, it seemed important to do something at that corner. And so this is, we think, is low-stated, but will make a big difference in terms of the perception. Looking back in the other direction, this is the smaller building, which is in the Monterey style. And this is something, I have to say, that from the first day I met Bill Wright, it's something he's been passionate about, is having this entrance, this gateway to Santa Barbara reflect a Monterey kind of a feeling. And in the original building, which actually, well, there's the building that Bill loves in Monterey, the Larkin House, which has actually, has roots to Daniel Hill and Santa Barbara, so it's kind of a fascinating history, which Bill would love to tell you about sometime. This is a tower element that we've incorporated. And Sheila, you asked me about this tower, and the real reason it's in here is because we sort of fell in love with this tower in the previous design in 2015. Of course, you can see here on the left that the building that was at the street was more of the Monterey character, and then it sort of morphed in the back. And so this element has continued to stay with the design. From the freeway, this is the basic sense you will have. Of course, there's, as we know, there's significant screening within the Caltrans right-of-way that is all going to remain. Looking from the east, the sense of that two-story building and then the one-story building beyond. And then the photo sims, which Kelly, again, has already showed you, but this was actually a photo sim that was done for that first proposal in 2006. This project did go to the HLC, by the way. And then our project in 2015, which was in that Monterey style at the corner. And although HLC liked this design, you know, I think ultimately, as you all know, when we put the story pulls up for the concept review, I think there was a concern about the mountain views, and that really precipitated the redesign to this current proposal. Another one of the scenes with that original 2006 design, the 2015 design, and then the significant change to the current design. I did want to mention, too, I put this photo up that Allison took at the site visit that shows the story pole outline. And she queried me on this because this is a, you know, when you look at this, it's a little bit lower than what you see with the story poles. I believe it's probably a function of the exact alignment of this. But I think the important thing there is the story poles really demonstrated the true massing and view blockage or lack thereof. And then the final photo sim. At our site visit, Commissioner Campanella, I think you asked me to show a little simulation of the Yan and Alley project on the other side of Garden, the Villa del Mar project. And so you can get a sense from this, those buildings to their ridge are around 34 feet. Our building to the top of that parapet, oh, this isn't working, I don't know if this one is, but the flat parapet right there is less than 30 feet. So I think this demonstrates the compatibility relative to that long Yan and Alley streetscape. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Courtney.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. Welcome, Ms. Miller. Just so you know, if someone's watching at home, they can't see the-
The pointer.
The pointer. Yeah, so if you could kind of describe where you're pointing, you can point, but describe, you know, I'm in the bottom-left of the plan or whatever, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Sure. So Chair Wiskom, commissioners, I'm Courtney Jane Miller, landscape architect for the project. So I was just going to walk you through our site plan today. The landscape plan you see here was the result of our entire team's collaboration, and we, what we really wanted to do was provide a site plan that appropriately respects the Laguna Channel restoration area, but also this property's unique location as the gateway to the Santa Barbara waterfront. So as Brian mentioned, there are two buildings on the site. They're primarily served by one driveway, parking areas, and a series of walkways throughout. There are plazas in front of each building, along the south side of each building here and here, Corner Plaza here, and our restoration area at the east side of the site. So moving on, at the southwest corner of the site, we have our courtyard plaza. The design of that was the direct result of our collaboration with the Historic Landmarks Commission, as Brian mentioned. And what you can see as part of that design is the pergola that Brian mentioned. We're thinking stone columns with heavy timber trellising overhead. The red shape indicates the layout of that pergola. Along with that, we're proposing decorative colored concrete with a leaf imprint that's indicated here on the bottom right, shade trees within tree grates, shown here, and some Santa Barbara sandstone boulders, California native plantings. And there's a pretty significant landscaped area that separates this plaza from the parking lot. So the intent, again, was to provide something that would help screen the parking lot and address its, you know, visual capacity from the street. So just beyond that, we have our parking court. So again, the idea here was to minimize the visual appearance of the cars from the street. So part of that includes that corner plaza that I just mentioned. And we're also proposing a network of enhanced paving here. So what you see on the screen, these are composite wood boardwalk walkways that will help guide pedestrians from the corner plaza into the site and from the parking lot into the building. And in addition to that, we're proposing enhanced paving within the parking lot itself. So that would be a concrete paver. We're also proposing the use of cool pavement within this area so that we can help address the urban heat island effect. That, along with the shade trees, will help shade the parking lot.
I'm sorry, what kind of pavement? I'm sorry.
Cool pavement. So just lighter in pigment, and it reflects less heat into the atmosphere. So here, we have some images of the boardwalk paving. So that would be a combination of composite wood decking here and here, along with potentially colored concrete scored in a pattern to emulate the look of wood. And then we have our concrete pavers here. So stormwater treatment, this site is somewhat unique in that the soil is contaminated. So in terms of stormwater treatment, we are proposing mainly features that do not infiltrate because of the contamination. So what you see here is initially, we have two rain garden areas, one along Yan and Alley, and one separating the commercial site from the restoration area here. Both of those will receive water from all of the paved surfaces of our site. So all of the stormwater will be directed into these and treated there. We're also proposing bioinfiltration chambers, essentially, within the parkway. So those will treat the stormwater that comes off of Yan and Alley. So both of those features together will capture and treat the stormwater, and then from there, it's directed into these underground detention systems here and here. So lastly, the habitat restoration area, as Brian mentioned, we have increased the buffer from 25 feet to 50, which is phenomenal. And as part of that, we're planning on basically improving what's there. If you've seen it, it's not great. The water is contaminated, extremely steep slopes, and there are a myriad of invasive species located in that area. So you can see in the photos here at the right, a lot of fan palms, canary palms, I think there's London plane, some ash and other tree species. All of those will be removed as part of the restoration. The slope will be set back and regraded so that it's not so steep, and we will be implementing new restoration plantings. So those will be sourced from locally genetic stock. And you can see here on the left, this diagram kind of overlays, excuse me, the restoration plan with our landscape plan. So you can see the blue is the channel down the middle, and then the other colors indicate the different plant communities that we're proposing. So freshwater marsh is kind of this light blue color, wetland margin alongside, riparian woodland is that dark green there, coast live oak woodland along the banks, and then coastal sage scrub as we transition into the commercial area. So lastly, our plant palette. In order to be as compatible as we can with the restoration area, we've proposed a palette that is primarily California natives. There's a handful of water-wise ornamentals in there, too, but the idea was really to have this site feel contiguous in terms of the plant material proposed. I think there are no existing trees within the site. There are a number of trees along the perimeter within the Caltrans right-of-way, which we will be protecting in place. And currently, the landscape plan shows about 65 new trees proposed. So this is just more plant palette. And I'll hand it back to Brian.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
So we have time to spare. Our entire team is here to discuss it. I think Courtney touching on the habitat restoration is just one of the benefits of this project. I know my dear friend Hillary Hauser is very pleased that we're doing this work. It's long overdue from her standpoint. Everything that we've done as a team really has been to try to think about sustainability here. The building, ultimately, I think one of the most important thing, you've heard me say this before, for buildings to be sustainable is that they're ultimately flexible. The main one-story building does have tall 18-foot ceilings, so a myriad of uses can go in there, and we designed it so it can be subdivided in multiple ways. But we would be happy to answer all of any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cornell. Does anyone have questions at this point? Or yes, go ahead, Commissioner Jordan.
I'll throw some out there just so they don't duplicate with public comment. Mr. Cornell, are you the appropriate person to ask about barrier between Laguna Channel and the parking lot? So in the past, we've had problems there with homeless people, and I think even City Creek's paid like $90,000 to put that weird unclimbable fence up along the eastern side there. Is there a plan to address how that'll continue, if something will continue to be an obstacle between people getting down in there and camping?
There will be a fence. It will replace the fence that's obviously there now, but it's important that there be a secure fence that's not climbable along that. And I think we made it six feet, so at least it'll, you know-
Essentially, one of those you can't get your foot or fingers into to climb over.
Right. And obviously, if somebody really wants in there, hopefully, it'll be enough of a deterrent, but visually not really part of the look.
And then, you know, I was going to go to that slide. So tell me about that. Do you retain 100% of all the stormwater unless there's like a big overflow event? Is that what those tanks, those things are, under the ground?
Yes.
And you reuse the water, then?
That water gets basically treated and then slowly metered out over time.
So what you've done is you've just found a couple, like is common down in that area with every project you guys get involved with, you've just found a couple spots where you can let water permeate down in safely?
Well, it's really, and it's not really permeating, it's actually being taken by pipe into this, into these-
Right. In specific locations?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the treatment process of it, that you're, those two square things that you're putting out there, those will have a capacity that you think is adequate, but would, if it overflowed, just go right to the street, kind of thing?
Mike, you want to come up and answer that?
Chair Wiskom, commissioners, yes, what is being proposed on Yan and Alley Street treats only Yan and Alley Street runoff. So that, the two filtera systems that you see on either side of the driveway are just going to take the runoff from Yan and Alley Street. High Point is basically the middle of the bridge over Laguna Channel, and then about halfway between Garden Street and our entrance is the other high point in Yan and Alley. So that water is running to Garden Street, the other water runs back towards our driveway. In the middle of our driveway currently stands a catch basin, a drop inlet, a curb inlet, and that will be replaced with a grate inlet. And the water that bypasses those two filtera, that's what the system is, that water treats the first one-inch rainfall event, and then the rest of the water will go into the storm drain.
Very cool. Okay. Good. Really nice to see that type of effort. So thanks. And then I think I just have one question for Ms. Miller, and that was on the, I don't know what you called them, the highlighted paths out of wood. Are those elevated? Is there space underneath those for stormwater purposes, too? Like that market that will rename, not be named, up on State Street?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, so very cool. So you're actually going to be able to have pedestrian walkways that actually have space underneath them that are helping with your stormwater, right?
Yes. That's the intent in the parking lot. Yes.
Thanks so much.
While I'm here, I want to clarify something. If Brian would quit messing with the PowerPoint. The plant palette, I mentioned there are a few ornamental species proposed. Those will only be used on the commercial site, not within the restoration area. The restoration area will be comprised completely of local genetic stock, California native species, and seed.
Thanks.
I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, to staff, could you confirm if I'm correct in understanding that staff's position is that the traffic studies to date are sufficient for the project considerations
Chair Wiskom and Commissioner Schwartz, good afternoon. Jessica Grant, supervising transportation planner. Yes, we have reviewed the traffic study, and we are in concurrent with the findings.
The reason I'm asking is that I'm trying to align some information in our package, and there are references, I'll go into this a little later, perhaps again after public comment, there are references to certain uses. At the same time, there are references to anticipated flexibility of uses, unknown uses. And then when I look at our conditions of approval, you know, specifically, well, the first and second page of our conditions of approval, there are references to both certain types of use, restaurant office, and all future building occupancies will need to be reviewed to ensure peak parking demand. So given this range of unknown uses, undetermined, I'm not understanding how staff could find that just the parking data that's been provided is sufficient. Are you in a position to shed some light on that?
Yes. So Commissioner Schwartz- So Commissioner Schwartz, the, let me first address the traffic. So the traffic model that was run, and it was from the city's traffic model with fare and peers. Yeah. Sorry. Just waiting for this. So the traffic model that was run was based upon three uses, which was retail, restaurant, and office. We, and based upon those findings and the trip distribution, et cetera, the findings were that did not contribute to more than 1% to a forecasted impacted intersection, and the intersections of concern for this project that are nearby were the, basically the on-and-off ramps at Garden.
Maybe we could make sure there's a slide up there that sort of correlates with Ms. Grant's commentary. See, in this parking demand, as we're going to the slide, Ms. Grant, on page two of 20 of our conditions of approval, number four, parking demand, I was referencing this, all future building occupancies/uses shall be reviewed to ensure that peak parking demand is met on-site. So given the uncertainty or unknowns around specific tenants, carve-outs of the square footage to accommodate those tenants and the uses, it really gives me pause to understand how we're settled on the parking demand assertions.
Right. So with respect to parking demand different from the traffic, it's, again, it was based upon shell uses for like a retail use and then restaurant and office space. They all have the same parking breakdown. Restaurant is, has two different, Title 28 is concerned, it's either the 1 for 250 breakdown or the four, let's see, one parking space for every three seats. And because this is a shell, at this point, we do not have a floor plan. That's something as the uses were to come on-site, when they do have an identified tenant, that's something that we will evaluate. But as far as, ATE did prepare a parking demand study with some different uses, and it did meet the peak demand, the number of spaces that were provided for the 138.
Okay. Has staff discussed with the applicant team what potential reconfigurations of the plan, the site plan, might require change if the tenant, the use configuration changes beyond the limits that are identified in the conditions of approval? And if you'd like, I can pause here, Madam Chair, and pick this up again after public comment. But to me, this is an important component of today's discussion and findings.
Does it involve, you're talking about conditions of approval?
Well, it's a whole set of assumptions that are really the foundation of many of the design and the decisions.
My feeling was that we'd hold-
I can do that.
-questions and comments on the C of A until after public comment, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
My other question to staff is if the applicant, the city and the applicant, wanted to entertain a possible use of live work for whomever, whichever kind of business entities, business entrepreneurs, might be interested in both living in conjunction with, physical conjunction with, the commercial uses of the space, what would that entail? Not straight residential, but live work?
Chair Whiskom and Commissioner Schwartz, the current zoning on-site does not allow for residential use, even if it's in a live-work type of situation. So in order to do something like that, it would require a coastal amendment, so a rezone, coastal amendment, et cetera.
Now, is that, just remind me, and then I'll turn it back to our chair, and I can pursue this a little later if necessary. Is that because of how we have defined? Do we have a definition for live work? And I ask because some other cities don't define live work as any residential. And it's for this purpose, it's to incent by zoning live work. So I was wondering if, how, have we constrained ourselves by our own definition of live work? I'm just not familiar with that in any of our policies or our municipal code.
Sure. Commissioner Schwartz, Title 28 does not specifically define live work. And the way that the city has applied it is basically if there's a residential use, then a residential use has to be allowed. So we don't consider them to be live work under Title, or sorry, we don't consider them to be commercial. We do analyze that residential portion in the coastal zone.
I see. Okay. I have other questions later. I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Anyone else? Okay. I have a few questions that I just think I'd like to clarify at this point. Start with, start with the landscape, Ms. Miller. So there's going to be a retaining wall proposed at the northern boundary of the site. And you talked about the significant screening in the Caltrans right-of-way with all the trees there. Is there a conflict between construction of this wall and the existing trees? Have you actually looked at that to see? I mean, is it feasible to construct the wall with the trees there? I haven't looked at the trees, so I'm not sure I want to, but.
Chair Whiskom, I believe the retaining wall is existing, and I think Brian is confirming that.
I showed on the plans as a four-foot-
It's a small wall.
Four-foot-eight-inch. Oh, it's already there?
No, it's a new one.
It's a new wall. That's what I thought. Yeah. So I just, okay, we can come back to that, but that was, that's one thing that I wondered if you had looked at it. It sounds like you haven't, but, so we could, we can deal with that later then, unless you have another comment on it.
Maybe our civil engineer wants to make a comment.
Yeah. We'll come back to it.
We've had many projects where we've implemented retaining walls around existing trees.
Yeah. I know. I just don't know the proximity of those trees. And since you did call it significant screening in the Caltrans right-of-way, and there are a lot of existing trees, I just, we can deal with it later.
Great.
And then is all your hardscape impermeable?
Yes. As a result, because of the contaminated soil. So if we proposed permeable paving, we would have to excavate the soil underneath in order for it to, you know, appropriately clean the water.
That makes, that makes good sense. Okay. Okay. And it doesn't matter that you're importing fill to raise portions of the site, then? That's not significant enough to deal with that? Okay. That answers that question, then. And then I guess I have one other question. I think that's all I have for you. Thank you very much. I think this is probably for the engineer, but you're raising the site. It said for flood and sea level rise mitigation. Yeah, you better come up to the mic. So what portions of the site are you raising, and how much? And was that reflected in the story polls? If it's insignificant, it doesn't matter, but?
Well, we're raising the site to get it above the designed flood elevation.
Right.
And then, so we are raising the site, and it's-
By how much?
Probably by about two or three feet.
Okay.
Is what it's coming up. And so what happens is that that's why we have the wall along the upper portion against the, not against, but parallel with the on-ramp wall of Caltrans. And basically, there's a slope there right now. And so what we're basically doing is raising it up. So our footing doesn't really require a tremendous amount of excavation to get it in. We will put in what's called an L-shaped wall, so our footing will come back onto our property.
Okay. So you're answering my previous question also.
Yes. Your question about affecting the existing trees.
Okay. So you feel confident that that won't be an issue, then, with those existing trees? Okay. And then, so you're saying you're raising it two to three feet where, in the whole, on the whole site?
Basically, yes. Basically about, I mean, that's what the average is. We were, of course, we're raising it more where the buildings are, because those are the facilities that have to be above designed flood elevation. The parking lots will probably have less than that, probably maybe a foot or 18 inches of fill.
Okay.
Chair Whiskom?
Was that, if you'd like to come up, Ms. Allen? Did you want to say something, or?
I was just trying to answer.
Yeah. I wanted to know about the story polls, because that's pretty significant.
No. We, what we did with the story polls is that we based everything on the grade. So we actually had to instruct the story poll installer to use an actual elevation-
A finished-grade elevation.
A finished height. That's correct.
Okay. That's great. Okay.
Chair Whiskom, just to clarify, I think you've heard Mr. Cornell refer to the one-story building as being 27 feet tall, and your staff report identifies it as 34 feet. And that's the difference between measuring from existing grade and the finished grade. So that's why there's been that discrepancy in the total height.
Thank you. Okay. And that's all I have for you. Thank you. And I just had, I have one more question before we go to public comment, and that's, there was a comment by the Urban Creeks Council, and they requested creating islands for the Western Pond turtles to bask. And I'm wondering, is that appropriate and feasible? Or can someone answer that question? I've got Ms. Miller answering it. Boy, I could never answer that as a landscape architect.
Well, actually, that was part of my presentation, and I forgot to mention it. We're proposing basking logs for the Western Pond turtle as part of that restoration.
Oh, wonderful. Oh, good. Okay. That's great. Thank you very much. Okay. Good. I think that's all. Does anyone else have any questions? I think the rest of mine are probably related to, actually, I have one more question. The, two more questions. The impact of losing nine on-street parking spaces on Yananali, and is this, has this been mitigated at all, or are we just net nine down on Yananali with the construction of the new center lane? Ms. Grant, can you answer that?
Chair Whiskom, for the nine parking spaces that are displaced on the street, it's my understanding that they're, they are not made up. The reason for the striping change was just to have a protective left turn, so you didn't have any cars queuing back into the Garden-Yananali intersection. So it is definitely made for safety reasons for the striping change.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then just one more question about that. I assume from what I read in the staff report or somewhere in our 160 pages of documentation that there are going to be increased pedestrian delays at the intersection with the introduction of the center turn lane. Is that correct? Because it's already a long wait there.
That's correct.
Is there any way to mitigate for that, or not? I just, I was curious. I, just that you do wait a long time there. So you're just going to have to wait longer. Okay. Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Anyone else? Okay. Yes.
Full of doctor questions.
Yes. Yeah. I actually have more questions. So, yeah, I'm just, I'm trying to stay away from the conditions of approval right now and just, okay, good. So with that, we will open public comment, and we did, I'm going to let the record reflect, we did receive some written correspondence, Anna Marie Gott and Santa Barbara Urban Creeks Council. And anyone else? Did someone else, did I miss someone? Ms. Riddell? Yeah. And, yes. And Trish Allen, the applicant, also sent in a correspondence. Yeah. Okay. So with that, I'll open public comment. And after we finish public comment, the applicant has about, has 11 minutes and 59 seconds left if you want to respond to anything. Okay. You can have 12, Ms. Allen. Okay. Okay. So you'll get, you will get two minutes on here. And our first speaker is Anna Marie Gott. Welcome, Ms. Gott.
Good afternoon. If it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, it's a duck. Your staff packet and even the conditions of approval talked about a restaurant. This property is zoned for industrial. For the coastal zone, this is required to be industrial. Is a restaurant or a grocery store industrial? For 13 years, that is what this particular project has been approved as, or moved forward in the project, in the planning process as. It has only been in the last few months that it's actually changed to something else, and not one thing has changed about the site design. You are losing parking on Yananali. It's not being replaced anywhere else. Why don't you move the sidewalk in? Make sure that we have some additional parking on the street. Why don't you actually send this back? And you know what? I didn't realize Commissioner Schwartz is not here. Maybe we can stop until she comes back. I think it's really important that she hear this. I apologize. I did not notice. I apologize. I made a stop, so I'll start over.
Well, you didn't make a stop. I agreed to stop. But Ms. Gott requested that we stop until you got back. So you have 41 seconds left, so go ahead.
Commissioner Schwartz, I was trying to talk about if it looks like a duck, quacks like the duck, it's probably duck. For 13 years, this has been basically seen as a market. You will have to do a change of use if you want to change it to something else. And in your conditions of approval, it says that the community development director will only look at the parking study. Why not look at the actual coastal, the coastal zone and its requirements? It makes absolutely no sense that this project is here today, because this project has not changed one iota from the time that it was originally brought here with a restaurant and a grocery store to today's project. And it is required to be industrial. If you look-
Your time is up. Yeah. Go ahead. Just wind up, please.
Yeah. If you look at your local coastal plan requirements, it says that you must preserve and protect industrial areas and uses, and that you reserve capacities for these higher uses, period. This is not a higher usage.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next speaker is Eric Peterson. Great. Welcome, sir. And you'll be followed by Ann Burdette. Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Chair, commissioners, my name is Eric Peterson, former Santa Barbara County Fire Chief and new member of the Heal the Ocean Advisory Board. I'm here today speaking for Heal the Ocean and Hillary Hauser, who could not be here and sense her regrets. For a little bit of background, Heal the Ocean has been working on the problem of groundwater contamination beneath the city of Santa Barbara for 20 years, identifying pollutants and getting reports to the Santa Barbara County Site Mitigation Unit when it was under the Fire Department, when I was still there, and more recently, when it was moved to County Environmental Health. Heal the Ocean hired an intern to enter data on these sites into the Regional Water Board Geo Tracker Program. And because of this work and a lot of hard work of others, this, we continue to have cleanup orders going out to property owners. The project site you're reviewing today on Garden and 101 has been on HDO's target list for the entire 20 years of our existence. And 10 years ago, even a decade ago, when I was the county fire marshal, this was a very notorious site for what would come off of it. off of it, particularly when it rained. It was well-known. So we've been aware that it has been a terribly contaminated site leaching into Laguna Channel for years. Tom Razak and Paul McCaw with the county have provided critical help as we have worked through this problem and quite a few others. Needless to say, we are very enthusiastic in our support of this project and see it as a tremendous opportunity. Hillary wanted me to convey that the icing on the cake is that it was designed by Brian Kornall, an architect who has done a lot to beautify Santa Barbara. In preparing our remarks, we went over to, we went over the April 2019 Site Mitigation Unit Cleanup Plan outlined by Mr. Razak, and we consulted with Planner Trish Allen of Suzanne Elitch Planning, who explained that the steps outlined in the SMU letter will be followed as the project begins with physical oversight by the County Site Mitigation Unit. For all of these reasons, Heal the Ocean heartily endorses this project, and we are very much looking forward to seeing this new, beautiful structure replace what has been a toxic eyesore in the middle of town for so long. We acknowledge that there are concerns about setbacks, but we see this as such a win that we are in full support of staff recommendations as they stand. We thank Brian Kornall for his good work, and we thank your commission for your oversight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much for your comments. Okay, our final speaker is Anne Burdette. Welcome.
Good afternoon, Chair Wiskom and Planning Commissioners. My name is Anne Burdette, and I am a board member of the Santa Barbara Urban Creeks Council. We would like you to consider certain modifications to the plan that would minimize the environmental impact. For example, our main concern is the small size of the creek setback. We urge you to increase it to a minimum of 100 feet, as that would be a more effective buffer for the environmentally sensitive habitat. The larger setback would help reduce the risk of erosion and flooding, filter polluted runoff, and minimize the impacts of the project on native wildlife. The Coastal Commission recommends a minimum 100-foot setback, if not larger, in Appendix A, Section 7 of their procedural guidance for the review of wetland projects in California's coastal zone from 1994. I have provided this document to the, to the Planning Commission for inclusion in the project file. I understand that the LCP does not require 100-foot setback, because on many properties that is not feasible, but this property is large enough for that to be feasible. And within this setback, we would like to see full restoration and soil remediation take place. We were very pleased to see the inclusion of soil remediation, native plantings within the restoration area, and the addition of basking logs for the western pond turtles. Thank you for considering our point of view.
Thank you very much. Okay, I appreciate that. Let the record reflect, we did receive written correspondence from Ms. Burdette also, I don't think I mentioned that, so, I did, oh, okay, okay, I don't remember mentioning. Okay, thank you. So that closes public comment. Did the applicant have anything to add in your 11 minutes and 59, oh, sorry, 12 minutes? Or do you want, do you want to wait?
I'd like to wait.
Okay, so we'll wait until after, we'll do commissioner, additional commissioner questions first, and then, then we'll come back to you, okay. So, yes, Commissioner Campanella, I can see you going for your light, so.
Okay, thank you. For staff, if I could, could you take me through the M1 zone requirements as currently been revised by the new zoning ordinance in, under Title 30? Number one, relative to the issue of use in the M1 zone and what it's trying to protect. Let's go through that first, and then I'll have further questions.
Oh, sorry, Chair Wiskom and Commissioner Campanella, I believe Mr. Busk is getting the zoning ordinance.
Okay. All right, while she's getting it, my following question then is going to be, is that anticipating that Title 30 will be approved by the coastal zone, now that we have our coastal plan in? Is what she's, what she will say the intent is, is that going to be the same intent that's given to the Coastal Commission and be consistent with both inland and coastal for Title 30?
Chair Wiskom and Commissioner Campanella, in terms of what will be submitted to the Coastal Commission for what are being called the Title 30 amendments, those are still anticipated to go through another round of amendments through the Planning Commission, because there are some cleanup items that we've caught, so there may be some additional changes. At this point, I'm not aware of additional changes to the M1 zone, so we are anticipating that they would be as they are written currently for the non-coastal areas.
So crucially, I guess, to our discussion today, the fact that the M1 zone currently under Title 30, as per the staff report, that would only allow the type of proposed commercial uses if it were accessory use, not primary. So if this were approved for the project, it would be legal non-conforming as far as we can see, once Coastal Commission would approve Title 30 and the M1 designation that we have and intent. I think that was mentioned earlier, I just want to confirm that.
Chair Wiskom and Commissioner Campanella, we do have use tables in our zoning ordinance, and so I would say that is a summary of what's allowed. There are commercial uses that are allowed in the M1 zone, but a lot of them have these caveats, you know, it's subject to certain regulations, and so you have to look to other sections of the code to see exactly what is permitted, so.
Okay, and as we know what the use is intended or could be for the property, based on our current tables, is it allowed or not allowed? Can we interpret that?
Commissioner Campanella, for example, under retail sales, we have food and beverage retail sales. That would only be allowed if it's considered an accessory use to an industrial use. However, there are other uses that are considered commercial that would be allowed. For example, maintenance and repair services. It's not technically an industrial use, and, but that is allowed in this zone. Same for animal care, animal sales and services. Those would still be allowed in the M1 zone, so you'd have to look at each specific use and make that determination, and then we, there are also differentiations between a neighborhood market, so for example, that is specifically not allowed in the M1 zone. Medical and dental offices are not allowed. Business and professional offices are only allowed as an accessory use to the industrial use, so it does depend on the, the specific type of commercial use that you're talking about.
Okay, so I guess what I'm, want to be sure of is that, or that we know, that what the use that is proposed, or may be, or may be flexible use coming up, is whether it's currently considered allowed under Title 30 in M1 or not, as we make that decision, realizing Title 28 is in force, but just knowing prospectively whether it's going to be legal non-conforming or not. Yes?
Ms. Allen, did you have something to add?
I did, specifically to this question.
Okay.
If that's appropriate, I could maybe use a little bit of my 12, our 12 minutes.
Sure, go ahead.
It's, it has bearing on Mr. Campanella's question, so thank you. We are, of course, aware and involved with the zoning ordinance update and the changes in the manufacturing zone. Our office participated in, in that update, and we've been looking at it, and with particular interest, to the specific plan area. So as the specific plan is written and adopted today, M1 is an underlying use, uses that are today allowed in the M1 are allowed to, to be in operation, is what I'm trying to say. So as Ms. DeBusk mentioned, there is going to be a cleanup effort that's associated with the Enzo that I believe is starting this, this fall. So as the Enzo was going through all the subcommittee hearings, we have made public comments specific to this property. We have gone on record, and I have correspondence that's been submitted, asking that the city consider, and will continue this effort following today, maintain the M1 uses that are allowed today as, I'm going to say, Title 30 gets implemented in the coastal zone. And we have a lot of, you know, I can elaborate on that further if you like. Our idea is that today's decision would result in uses in the future that would not be non-conforming, if I may use that double negative. So we want, we, our desire is to have conforming uses when Enzo gets implemented in the coastal zone, and we've met with city staff multiple times about this. We feel that we were, with a lot of head nodding happening in the room, but we will be continuing to participate in that effort.
Okay, so you don't feel the uses that you envision, because we heard, we heard it earlier in staff's presentation, would be legal non-conforming under Title 30 when approved by the coastal zone, as far as you know?
Well, what we are asking for is that the, the specific plan remain approved as it is today to allow the Title 28 uses under M1 to, to continue on. It's possible that as the city implements Title 30 in the coastal zone, other M1 properties will be similarly restricted as they are in the inland area, but we're asking that this piece of property be, be left out of that effort, if you will.
Okay, all right, thank you. I guess the, the other question goes to, a little confused on views, if I can approach that question, okay. The, it appears to me that there was a view analysis that was done from Cabrillo Boulevard, and what would normally be considered established scenic public vistas, I believe, and this project would not, as currently planned, would not interfere with those established public views, correct? They might interfere, but is that correct? They don't interfere currently with this design?
Chair Wiskom and Commissioner Campanella, they don't interfere with views from the beach or from Cabrillo Boulevard, but I want to be clear that those aren't all established public scenic views. Just, there is a slight differentiation, and that term is kind of specific for environmental review, but we did look at views from the beach and from Cabrillo Boulevard, and this project would not impact them.
Okay, so views from Yan'anali, is, is that also to be considered, or because it's not considered an established public view, it's not really a condition from the corner of Yan'anali and Garden?
Chair Wiskom and, Chair Wiskom and Commissioner Campanella, there, the views, any development on the site would, was, would impact some, some view from, from some perspective as you're walking along the street. So it will be an impact to the views, but they've done everything they can, not, there's really not a lot of development that could take place on this site without, without being an impact to someone's view as you're walking along or driving along Yan'anali towards, towards the Riviera or on Garden, towards the 101, so.
Okay, so suffice it to say, they've done a little more on their, the way they've created their site, that goes a little bit beyond what would have struck from Cabrillo Boulevard.
Right.
And was sensitive even to the surroundings as best they could.
Right, and, and their design, their redesign of the project has created a less than significant impact to the views of the mountains.
Okay, just following up on where Commissioner Schwartz's question, as far as housing in the, this area, there's the specific plan, and there's a number of parcels that are shown. Are any parcels available for housing, for worker housing, employer housing, in this particular area south of the freeway?
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner, sorry, Chair Wiskom and Commissioner Campanella, are you asking what parcels surrounding the site are zoned to allow?
Yes, part of this specific plan, are there, is there capability anywhere to get housing projects approved for the many workers that we have down in the coastal zone?
In the specific plan, this site does not specifically allow housing, however, other sites in the specific plan do allow for housing.
Are any of those coming forward, do you know, or?
Area A allows housing, and that's coming up for conceptual review by the Planning Commission in August.
And that would include housing, or do we not?
The proposal is for hotel use.
Okay, so there are no proposals for housing, and I guess the average unit density or higher density program, is that supposed to be applied? If it's still in effect, is that supposed to be applied in the coastal zone?
Chair Wiskom and Commissioner Campanella, the AUD program is not in effect in the coastal zone.
Was the intention to do that once it, once your coastal plan got approved?
Yes, ultimately, that is the intent, but it is not currently applicable.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a question for the city attorney, Ms. Ostender. The specific plan was approved so far back that I was still in office. What I, what I was wondering is, does that, the approval of that specific plan, given that, you know, basically, this is supposed to be industrial uses, light industrial, does that give the specific plan weight and effect to then permit this use?
Do, Chair Wiskom, Commissioner Lodge, are you referring to the existing uses under Title 28?
I'm referring to the, the specific plan itself.
Correct.
Which allows these various uses.
Correct.
And how much weight does it carry as against the city's zoning, whether it's under Title 28 or 30?
That's a good question, and I was actually looking at that. The, under our new Title 30, the specific plans carry a great weight, but under Title 28, there really isn't any specific language that references which carries, so I would be looking to the government code. If you look at Title 30, it says the specific plan prevails over the base zoning, so that would continue, but there's no such language in Title 28.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. I think to the applicant team, I want to go back to questions I started to pose to staff, so if someone from the applicant team could come up, either Mr. Kornall or Ms. Allen.
Well, that depends on what you're going to ask.
It's not about the architecture, but you're the lead man, so maybe you could start and, okay. Is there, has there been a restaurant tenant secured for part of the space at this time?
No, we have no tenants whatsoever at this point.
Neither a grocery store?
No.
Okay. I ask because these are very important and significant assumptions in terms of the type of use, uses, the types of tenancy, the square footage, and then vis-à-vis what the zoning allows. And as a lead-up to today, I've done a lot of research in talking to both restaurateurs as well as grocery store chain owners and developers, and I have some skepticism about whether or not, in this location, with this square footage and these constraints, some of these uses are actually going to be viable, especially on the large grocery store side of things, given the trends of the difficulties of grocery stores, the larger grocery stores in our community, and we're grocery stores that have left our community, because the size of our community population-wise doesn't support, I don't want to say anymore, but certainly not a proliferation or significant number of additional major grocery stores. So I don't know what research has been done, but what concerns me is, on the one hand, on the one hand, this nebulous reference to the Shell Building, at the same time, it seems as though there are certain assumptions made about tenancy, and yet, I don't know, Madam Chair, if it's okay now at this point to reference conditions of approval, but between the staff report and the conditions of approval, we have this direct link that I think needs to be addressed, and that is, what's approvable today, let's just say today, by Planning Commission, without knowing, I'll just put this out there, Mr. Kornall, and to your, to your client, whether or not you can get a restaurant tenant in? What are you? and to your client, whether or not you can get a restaurant tenant in, whether you can get a grocery store tenant in, and the constraint of office use that's in our package, 25% only of the 33,451 square feet shall be provided as office use in this specific plan. And look at the success of the Impact Hub, they're actually looking for more square footage, that's office space. That's where we have entrepreneurs needing very small, modestly priced office space. So I don't know if you can comment at all about this. As you can tell, I'm frustrated with a frustrating process with zoning that I think is hampering us as a community. Not that I'm going to change the zoning today, but when Title 30 comes back, maybe for cleanup, maybe we can look at some of this. I don't know how we can agree to some of these assumptions when you don't have a grocery store tenant saying, yeah, I'll go in and take, what, not more than 25,940 square feet in Building 1. What if they say, no, you know, the minimum for us, we need 30,000 square feet to have a viable, maybe, major grocery store presence? And without, if I could just, one last thought, and without significant resident population in this area, I'm also a little skeptical of the viability. So anything you could comment on?
Okay, so I can tell you that we were prepared to talk a little bit more about this. You would be surprised that the census tract in this area has a population that is much larger than we would suspect. From the Bird Refuge over to City College, there's 10,000 people that live south of the freeway. And they are actually woefully underserved by grocery stores. That said, we have a condition of approval that clearly would require us, should a grocery store tenant of whatever kind come along, we are going to have to demonstrate and the city is going to have to be satisfied that that's not going to create a traffic impact. But I can assure you that if you look at the facts, we are, as a community, well underserved by grocery stores. The average in the state of California is a grocery store for every 4,000 people, and in Santa Barbara, we are approaching 8,000 people per grocery store. And Scott Shell can speak more to this if you are interested. We didn't want to burden the commission with these discussions today, but at this point, I can tell you that the Wright family has invested a tremendous amount of time and money to find a development here that is going to serve them for the long haul. They have no intention of ever selling this. They want this building to be flexible for uses as they occur for their grandchildren and great-grandchildren and family members thereafter. And they're passionate about that. And so, you know, it is a matter of finding, you know, to basically place a building here that will be able to be flexible for whatever uses come along. And clearly, we have a condition now that's going to obligate the family to demonstrate that it is not going to create an impact prior to them going in, and so no leases are going to be signed without us first confirming that that use can, in fact, be put in these buildings.
I have one follow-up question for you.
Chair, before we move on.
And then I want to go to Mr. Busk, if I could. Yes, Mr. Busk?
Chair Wiscombe and Commissioner Schwartz, I just wanted to mention that even if a tenant had been chosen and in place for this site, we wouldn't look at it just for that specific tenant, because we do want these buildings to have flexibility over time. So when we're doing environmental review, we're looking at a reasonable worst-case scenario. We're not going to look at the very worst case, but we're going to look at a reasonable mix of uses to make sure that they will work and will not cause impacts. And so we feel that we've done that and that's what our analysis is based on. And just related to some of the conditions, there is a restriction on office use.
I see that.
That's actually because it's in the specific plan.
I know.
That's not a new condition, it's just part of the specific plan that we wanted to document here. And same for the parking demand, that's a condition of the specific plan, they have to comply with that. We just, in terms of implementing it in the future, we thought it was easier to bring that to staff's attention so that it doesn't get missed, so.
Yeah, I know, I know. Thank you, though, for referencing that. I was going to comment that it is in the specific plan, number two Cabrillo Plaza project. I have other thoughts about specific plans, that'll be in my commentary later. Just one more question, if I could, so, and I don't know if this is to you or staff, pardon me if I need a little bit more education. I've heard from the Radius Group that the number one type of most desirable space in all of South County is industrial, the industrial rollups, I'm sure you've heard the Radius presentation on this as well, for a wide variety of reasons we don't need to get into today. So that leads me to ask then, has that been explored in terms of, can we do it? Is it desirable? I mean, now we're looking at, on the one hand, a shell, on the other hand, restaurant, grocery, minimal office.
You know, to answer the question, you know, absolutely. I mean, that's the way we've designed this, with multiple rollup doors, with loading docks in back, you know, high ceilings, so it could serve those kind of uses. Obviously, at the same time, we're having to make sure that we've got adequate parking to serve.
Of course.
Other kinds of uses. And so it really has been a matter of fitting all of this in and make sense, and we did provide a few extra spaces over and above what was required, just to facilitate whatever uses would come along. So, yeah, if an industrial use came along, that would be great. You know, the family would love that. And I think as far as the restaurant is concerned, I think this, again, is kind of going back to the vision of Bill Wright and his family, that, you know, they know how this whole area operates, they've got a lot of tenants right now, and they'd love to have a little restaurant. You know, they've always sort of dreamed of having a little restaurant use that would be there to serve the people and services that are on these properties.
You mean like a Metropolis Cafe, that sort of?
Like Metropolis, right? I mean, there's a small little user, you know, but, I mean, there could be more. It could easily be, and it's really seen as just an ancillary kind of a use that, you know, is going to be hopefully valuable in the future, but it doesn't have to be a restaurant. We just want to make sure that we have that flexibility.
So as you proceed, I don't know if this is back to staff, so as the applicant proceeds with really a wide range of unknowns to my questions and the replies you're hearing today, are we really just looking at the design, well, of course, various general plan element conformances or compliances, a landscape, an initial landscape plan, environmental review, and parking assumptions that may need to be revisited based on unknown uses? Is that really, I mean, it's almost like a shell of a project for the shell that is unknown in terms of uses, no? I'm seeing Trish may want to come up and respond. These unknowns, I'll just say, and then I'll just wrap up, Madam Chair, thank you. These unknowns are as important as the knowns, as the environmental, the biological, you know, and so forth, so.
Yes, I know.
Seems like we have a balance of unknowns and unknowns.
Chair Wiscombe, Commissioner Schwartz.
I'll respond too, after.
Well, I just, I mean, again, you know, this is a long-term investment. This is tens of millions of dollars.
I understand that, Mr. Cornell, I do.
And, you know, it has got to be flexible for whatever uses may come along, and yes, that's what we are building, not unlike, you know, much of the industrial or development in Golita that occurred, where buildings were built anticipating future tenants, and they've changed 20 times since they have been built.
And I'm all for the flexibility. If you heard me during the new zoning ordinance, the hearings that we had, I wanted to provide as much flexibility in looking at our zoning and rezoning as possible, because look how much has changed. Gee, just since the 1983 specific plan was created, I have some frustrations with the assumptions and constraints, but, you know, I spoke with Mr. Busk before the hearing today about what would it take to modify a specific plan because so much has changed in all regards, you know?
I've not changed a bit since 1983.
You've gotten better. Okay, thank you very much, that's it for now.
Chair Wiscombe and Commissioner Schwartz, I did want to respond, just to reiterate that, yes, there is uncertainty in the uses. From a traffic model standpoint, the uses that were evaluated were specifically retail, restaurant, and office, and they were evaluated on their certain square footages, and that was it, there's lots of flexibility in that retail. The use concern for a congestion standpoint would be grocery and as well as additional restaurant space, because those have higher rates in the PM peak hours.
You mean then industrial?
Than a general, just retail use. Grocery is much higher. The trip generation for the PM from a retail rate is 3.37 per 1,000 square feet versus 9.24 per 1,000 square feet. So as it translates to the 25,000 square foot building, the retail is about 87 trips in the PM peak hour versus a grocery store about 240. So, but again, we don't know the uses, and that's why we have the condition that is satisfactory with staff and the applicant team.
Yeah, we have a number of conditions, there are a number of them, yeah, that we're talking about. Okay, okay, thank you, Ms. Grant.
I think the goal, if I'm getting you correctly, is to really balance it out, so that, I mean, we have a fixed number of parking spaces, so we know that, and the, you know, trips will depend upon the uses and also the square footage. So it all needs to be a balancing act, and we don't have the pieces of the puzzle that fit together yet, but that's up to you guys. That's my take on it, and you're nodding your heads, that's good, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. Commissioner Jordan, you're next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Trying to think, I think I was only three in 1997, so I have absolutely no recollection of what took place. Mr. Busk, I just, while we're trying to figure out what's going to happen in the future and who's going to approve what and what that should mean to this, remind me about specific plans. Specific plans, generally the dozen that exist in this city, are an opportunity for a parcel owner and the city to enter into negotiations that benefit both. And for the parcel owner, it gives them an opportunity to lock in things like uses and whatever else. And in this particular case, the one I know of, the particular benefit to the city was they got land to make a major infrastructure and street improvement in the city, right? And so part of that horse, the concept of a specific plan, right, is part of that horse trading, if you would call it, is to give both sides something that they see as beneficial while also allowing the, some level of certainty for the parcel owner into the future, right? And so that's what we have here. I realize the transition from 28 to 30 is, I think you say in the staff, somebody says, Kelly says in the staff report, is years away, maybe several years away with the Coastal Commission, so, but at its core, the role of the specific plan was to allow this parcel owner this type of flexibility or even specific use into the future in terms of concessions he made to the city, right? Okay, thank you.
Chair Wiscombe, Commissioner Jordan, just a follow-up on that. As you know, the specific plan implements our general plan, which is our constitution, so it is a very binding document, and it does, as you say, give certainty to the parcel owners within the specific plan on what they can and can't do. So, and you are correct, I'm just bringing us back to the core.
That's the first time you ever responded and called me correct, so thank you for that. Thank you.
I don't want you to get a big head.
Yeah, there's a first time for everything, yeah. Don't count on it again, though, yes. Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Higgins, you were next.
So for staff or maybe the applicants, engineer, are we different in Santa Barbara with respect to trip generation for these uses, or are we the same as what's in the average nationwide manual that is referenced as what, that trip generation manual, I can't remember the name of it.
Chair Wiscombe and Commissioner Higgins, for just a general retail rate, we're in the ballpark for ITE is the other kind of guiding document that we look to. In our city traffic model, it has a lot of uses, but it doesn't have everything in there, and when there, it doesn't have a specific use listed in the city's traffic model, then our next step is to look at ITE, just to look at general traffic rates. But there is a distinction from just general retail versus a grocery store.
So we don't have a Santa Barbara version of a grocery store of this size?
That's correct, just general retail.
Okay, so then, is part of what is in between the lines in this condition of approval that, you know, the applicant could submit, do their own counts to substantiate that there wouldn't be an impact, and would the city transportation staff accept, or how would that work, I guess?
Chair Wiscombe, Commissioner Higgins, I think at this point, because we're still dealing with the Shell and the purpose of the condition is really to allow flexibility, we don't know what the uses look like or the specific square footage is for the building, A, the main building, it could be subdivided into different tenant spaces where we might have smaller sizes for different uses. We just don't know it at this time, but we are.
Right, I know that, but it says the condition is, you know, any future building occupancies and uses will be reviewed.
Correct.
So I would imagine that review would, could include the applicant's substantiation of a Santa Barbara-area grocery store as a comp that would be different than what's in the ITE. Is that part of the process, or could that be?
We would have to run additional traffic model runs based upon the specific uses if it's something that does not fit the mold in our traffic model.
Okay, so I guess my real question is, how is, you know, tell me what I'm missing here, because the condition that was in the staff report that we had prior to today and the underline, I can't tell what the difference is, other than it says it could go to the planning commission. Is that the extent of the difference?
Chair Wiscombe, Commissioner Higgins, the difference is that we pulled out reference to a specific size of use or a specific use that would be a problem, and just left it more general that it would be looked at.
So it's more broad, and maybe this was already touched on, but, you know, buildings change occupancies and uses all the time, but it might be better to, I kind of liked the specificity of the other condition, but, you know, changing occupancies, is that a building code lingo? I mean, changing occupancies is occupancy code, and I guess I just wonder, when we're talking about changing uses, changing land uses is what we're referring to, going from office to retail or from retail to restaurant, rather than an occupancy loading, I guess?
Right. Chair Wiscombe and Commissioner Higgins, perhaps tenants might have been a better term, because the occupancy of the building might not necessarily change. What we want to see is when tenants change, really, we're looking at uses.
But we have a change of use provision in our code already.
That's correct. We do, we already look at parking, you know, when a project changes tenants, that's something that we do. The difference is looking at the traffic, because we don't, once a building is constructed, we don't necessarily redo environmental review, because if all you're getting is a building permit, that's not discretionary. So this allows us to check that with the new uses.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Commissioner Campanella, did you have an additional question?
Thank you. I had asked staff, there's, I believe, per the specific plan on this particular property, there is allowed 45,000 square feet approximately, and the plan is for about 33,500. So that remaining 11,000 or 12,000 square feet, does that just disappear? Is it usable in other areas of the same specific plan? Is it transferable? What happens to that unused square footage?
Chair Wiscombe, Commissioner Campanella, we did look at that, and there's nothing that speaks specifically to it, but I would imagine that it remains, so that if they wanted to add an additional square footage, they could, it doesn't, as I think you put, disappear. Or I don't think it could be transferred outside of the SP2, because we have now the growth. the growth management plan. So at the SP2, the specific plan takes it outside of that TDR.
Okay. But the, this is not the only parcel in specific plan two, is that correct? There's other parcels?
So I think Ms. Busk can answer that one as to the other parcels.
Chair Wiscom and Commissioner Campanella, there are other parcels. That is correct. However, the way that our growth management program is set up, projects with an approved specific plan that have implemented part of their plan through, for example, construction of the roads, they're basically vested in terms of their square footage. They don't need an allocation from our various categories. This is the only site that had a specific square footage associated with it in the specific plan. It talks about the 45,000. The other sites, it's silent. It identifies a maximum number of hotel rooms, but not the corresponding square footage. So in the future, there really isn't that square footage limit on the other parcels in SP2 as there would be on any other parcel in the city.
Okay. So there's just two parcels in SP2, the plant, the hotel site that might be coming to us and the site?
There are multiple parcels. I don't know the number of actual parcels. There are the four areas, Area A, B, C, and D. I think Area A is made up of multiple parcels. I have no idea how many actually underlie that one area.
What rights, do those owners have allocated square footage or they would have to apply for square footage under growth management?
They do not need a square footage allocation. They basically have the square footage. So it's not coming out of a specific pot. It was, when we redid the growth management ordinance, they were essentially kind of grandfathered in, shall we say, with whatever square footage they come forward with if they're in line with what's allowed in the specific plan, if that makes sense. They still need a development plan, so they need planning commission to approve the size of those buildings, but they're not taking away from any pot that other parcels in the city can use.
Okay. So let's say there's a parcel that has 20,000 square feet assigned to it currently, another parcel. There could, there could, there's square footage assigned or that another parcel can develop within the specific plan area, correct? Up to a certain amount?
There isn't an up to amount that applies on these sites as there would other sites. For example, a site outside specific plan two, if it's vacant, it can have 25% of the lot. That's the floor area that they can get. These sites don't need that same allocation. They're basically not pulling from the maximum, you know, square footage in the city. They're outside of it. So it's, I guess you could look at it as unlimited. That's not really the case because we have to look at environmental review setbacks and other limitations in the specific plan, but it's not the same as other parcels in the city.
So we're saying there wouldn't be value to another parcel trying, within the specific plan area to try to pick up this 11,000 square footage?
That's correct.
Because they wouldn't need it?
That's correct. It's only valuable to this parcel if they wanted to do a small addition in the future.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. I just had a couple more quick questions, I think. The Habitat Restoration Plan, has this been reviewed and approved by the Creeks Division? And if not, is it going through that process?
Chair Wiscom, Habitat Restoration Plans do not go through, private plans do not go through Creeks Commission. However, they are reviewed by Creeks Division staff and so they have reviewed this plan. They've made comments which have been incorporated into the plan. So they have definitely been part of the review process.
Yeah. That was my question. Creeks Division staff?
Yes, Creeks staff have reviewed it.
Okay. Great. Good. Let's see, what else do I have here? I think that's about it. Do my fellow commissioners have questions on the C of A? Because I do. Does anyone else have, or should I just go ahead and, okay. Okay. I'm curious on the conditions of approval. Okay. On page 90 of 160 in our packet.
Can you tell us what the condition of approval is?
And I'll give you the, if I can find it. Here it is. Okay. Which is 16, page 16 of the conditions of approval. Given the traffic noise in the area, is the construction of the sound barrier wall completely necessary? Is that a general condition? It just seems, seems like a really huge expense for, you know, both Yala and Nolly and Garden considering...
Chair Wiscom and Commissioners, I think maybe Trish Allen can help answer that one. Can you?
Well, I would assume her answer would be...
I want to hear what my answer would be.
I think I probably know, but go right ahead. Yeah. I'm just, I think it's a staff-imposed, a city-imposed condition.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to delete that project condition.
I'm wondering if there was some sort of noise study done that required this, that triggered this sound barrier wall, but...
Chair Wiscom, we don't have set standards for what constitutes an environmental impact related to short-term construction noise, but we do have some kind of guidance that we use. For example, projects that have long construction periods. So we consider anything over a year is long and may have noise impacts.
And this is 17 months, right?
Yes. Projects that involve a lot of grading tend to be louder than other projects. Projects that have pile driving. This project doesn't have pile driving, but it does have significant foundation work. And so we were concerned about noise impacts to the neighbors, particularly residential neighbors in the condominiums. And so the applicant did prepare a noise study addressing short-term construction noise, and that's the recommendation that came out of it.
Okay. So that triggered the sound barrier wall. Okay.
It was worth a shot.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Allen, for your, for your very helpful answer to that question. Too bad you didn't get to answer it. Yeah. Could have said it was a mistake. So, okay. Let's see. I think that's, I think that's it. I have some comments that I'll make on some of the other conditions, but not, not questions. So that's it. So let's, let's jump into any remaining questions and discussion, Commissioner. Oh, before we do that, does the applicant, does the applicant team have any other comments since you've heard all our questions? You've got 12 minutes, so do you have anything else you'd like to add before we go into deliberation?
Thank you for the opportunity to come back up. In terms of the discussion or questions around the revised project condition, certainly the intent with occupancies wasn't a building code occupancy. So if the commission is looking at, with staff changing that to tenants, we'd be fine with that, that shift. But otherwise, I think we don't have anything else, else to add. Do you have any questions for us?
Any more questions for the applicant team?
I think we're good.
Commissioner Higgins, no? Okay. Okay. Great. Thank you very much for that. So it's back to the commission for deliberations and we'll start with Commissioner Jordan.
Actually, I'll come back to that. I just wanted to share something I told Mr. Cornell before on your sound wall question, and that is his project on Upper State, what is it? Estanja? Am I saying that right?
Estanja.
Yeah. It says by far on a busy street for a long period of construction, been my poster child for great project management on site. That, of course, includes a, whatever, six-foot-tall green wood wall. And so the alternative, of course, is they fence it in and they put up some horrible saggy chain link fence that's wobbling and falling over every other day. And so while I appreciate the desire not to have the expense of doing that, I think it leads to a better project in terms of just how your project interfaces with the surrounding community for almost two years. So I just thought, offer that.
That's good input. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Higgins?
Yeah, I'll end up supporting the project despite a couple shortcomings, I think. And, you know, I'm not allowed to play armchair architect. Sometimes it doesn't keep us from doing that. But I don't know how I feel about the entry, what do you call it?
Pergola.
Pergola, yeah. And so I'm just curious, you don't have to answer it now, but I'm curious how that's going to be maintained. I don't get that there's a lot of benefit to this, I think what is a similar pergola over at the Ralphs at this point. It just doesn't have more of an attractive nuisance, but I'll wish you the best of luck in terms of securing that and keeping it tidy. I guess my, my issue with the condition wasn't that, you know, we burdened the project or the applicant or staff with a procedure that is already embedded in our code anyway, and certainly not for a change of tenants. That would be something I wouldn't want to open up, you know, in terms of a procedure, but definitely a change of use is, I think, is the intent. So other than that, it's, it's great to see that there's a, somehow in the last minute, a compromise on some things. So that was great to come into the lunch meeting today to find that. So I'll support the project.
Commissioner Higgins, are you satisfied then with the language as written in the revised B1?
I think removing the word occupancy out of there would be my, my wish. And I think that sounded like it was supported by staff and the applicant.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Jordan, we're back to you again. Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too am not going to have a problem working through any of these approvals and the findings. I guess, you know, I would call both sides, all four, well, three sides of that, that corner right now, a bunch of longtime, decades-old tortured properties that have just ended up being whatever they are for whatever reason. And I commend the Wright family for sticking this one out for all the decades. Not that old, but old enough to remember back hotels and aquariums, but it was a long time ago. So to me, I hope that you're able to take part in the allowances that you have in the specific plan. I, I think the city should be as flexible as possible and should follow your lead in what you're trying to do in addressing what you're putting on the site and looking to the future. As we know, we're going to see another project across the street in several weeks or a couple of weeks. And that neighborhood is, that particular block, I think, is going to change dramatically in the next decade. And there will be people walking around. There will be people coming through there on a regular basis. I, in particular, like the, the corner treatment with the trellises and the little plaza. Kind of harkens back to, I know what Mr. Cornell always does on those corner entrances. And when you move the building back, you still sort of maintain that little intriguing corner element there. I appreciate the fact, as you walk through there, that you're just not running me down a chute, that you're going to have trees offset in there. You probably know I like tree grates by now, so I appreciate that little, little part of it. Yeah, that was a big check mark on my list. So the, I, I think you've done generally a service to the, the community also in redeveloping that property, both from a mitigation of 100 years old of bad soil and finding a way to utilize, or finding a potential way to utilize that property and also in a, in a manner that I'm sure at no small expense will take care of the stormwater runoff at the same time. And then, you know, the other big gain to me on this also is the burden you're going to take on for the, for the channel restoration and the habitat repair. That, that channel has looked like that, of course, while being right next to a city-owned property forever that the city has done nothing with. And of course, waiting for the opportune time to make sure that the parcel owner did that. And I know it's a challenge. I know we, we sometimes flippantly just expect that of projects, but I think it should not, never go without saying that we should be very appreciative as a community that there's a, both a project that's willing and a project that thinks it has the resources to, to make those improvements. And I think that's it. Again, I look forward to seeing this project come along and, and I think you guys have, the project itself has put the right people on their team to, to get this project moving forward. I'm impressed with what it looks like now as to where you're going to take it. So best of luck with it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Jordan. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you. I just want to echo a lot of the thoughts of Mr. Jordan. A lot of work involved in this project, the cleanup, creek restoration, services provided, really cleaning up this particular corner. That's a lot of investment that a lot of people would not undertake. And I think it's certainly an improvement to a gateway to the city of Santa Barbara and the coastal community that we are. The only thing I'm thinking of, maybe at some point, somebody will come in in this area with some housing on their projects. We have hundreds, thousands, 10,000 jobs in this area and growing all the time, and we have the need for housing. This site, if I look at it, I know it's not zoned, but if I look at it standing across the street and see what it could be relative to a housing project, even its, even its current form, restaurant, that's, or convenience store, workplace upstairs, three stories of perhaps various incomes that would be part of a specific plan that the housing authority could also take part of. We need range of all incomes down there, not just $2.5 billion and $3.5 billion condos. I was, I was part of a specific plan for the East Beach collection where we took an industrial site in the M1 zone, came in with a plan for below-market-for-sale housing, along with the Housing Authority and the Santa Barbara Foundation, to get a specific plan approved. We were not around for the actual building that went to City Ventures, but the idea there was to retain the ability to do manufacturing under the M1 zoning, but at the same time have an alternate. And the alternate would be housing under certain conditions, certain ranges of affordability that could work for the entire community. So maybe not this site, but maybe someone else that's in this area would start thinking about looking at a backup plan, have an industrial M1 or ocean-related commercial use in hand, but take the time to go through a specific plan as an alternate use and maybe not have to worry about change in uses, new tenants, vacancies, perfect long-term investment for their family, the cash flow from a rental project that you know is going to be occupied, and doing a real community service. So this may not be it. Maybe people are, maybe your processing is complete. You don't want to look at an alternative, but I do try to encourage people south of the 101 or any, these type of properties, that a 1983 plan is not really applicable today in a lot of ways. Okay? We've changed. There's a lot more people who are living and working here. So I think a project in conjunction, public, private, city, housing authority, here as an alternative or on another site will really benefit the community. So I think we ought to think about that as we're moving forward and stop planning for 1983. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to echo Commissioner Campanella's remarks about the need for housing. We need the housing way more than we need new jobs. SB CA considers that there are 22,700 surplus jobs on the South Coast. That's all the way from Rincon through Gaviota. And some 12,000, well, a little under 12,000 of those are in the city of Santa Barbara. And this project is just going to create more jobs. Where are these people going to live? I would really appreciate it. And I think that it would be great for the community if the rights as they move forward with the remaining parcels in the, in this... if the rights, as they move forward with the remaining parcels in this specific plan, would consider housing. It is so much more, there's so much greater need for it than there is for more hotel rooms, for example. Otherwise, I'm really pleased with the increase in the restoration area along the channel and the 100 feet, and Mary Carroll's involved. I know there, it's going to be, she's a botanist, who's, I assume she's here because she will be involved with the plant selection for that, and pulling the building back so that more of the river and the mountains remain in view. And I like the little corner plaza. I did have a question about that I should have asked before. It looks as if pedestrians will be directed either directly up the garden side or along Yanana Alley when they come in. It doesn't look as if they will be able to walk diagonally through that. Is that correct?
Well, they could. Commissioner Lodge will go diagonally through a parking lot if they wanted to, but we wanted to give them a specific path of travel outside of the vehicular area.
Okay. Well, I wasn't sure if it was going to be landscaped so that, in a way, to deter them from going through.
Well, there is, yes, there is. As Courtney mentioned, there is landscaping there. I mean, people could cut through it, but hopefully the landscaping will prevent that.
Yeah, people tend to follow the line of least resistance, so if I think of that. But otherwise, I can support the project and will. You ready for a motion, Madam Chair?
Let's finish with comments, and then I'll come back to you for that. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, let me get right to the required applications. I will be supporting, this is on page two of our staff report, development plan, front setback mod, number one, that's item B, and then the other, front setback mod C, and a coastal development permit. Now, I'd like to provide some other comments if I could. I'm always hesitant to burden a project, condition a project, and require or obligate property owners beyond what's reasonable. For those of you who have watched me, heard me over the years on Planning Commission, to me, there are much larger strategic planning initiatives that should have taken place, that still need to take place, to sort of master plan parts of our city looking forward we've not done, in some cases, we're still not doing. The coastal zone, funk zone, this area of our coastal zone is still not, still not being master planned. And so while I may have a strategic vision for improved uses, greater variety of uses, housing was mentioned, as you know, I'm a strong housing advocate. As much as I would like to, if this were starting now going forward, this project starting this year going forward, encourage the property owners to consider folding in to whether it's this parcel or other parcels under the specific zone to include a mix of housing. I could not see myself to being unfair in burdening this project with anything other than what's before us and what, beyond what's already been said today. Now, I think there are some key benefits to the project as it's been designed thus far. First, on the environmental side, without going into too much detail, because it's been documented and been said by some of my colleagues, with significant soil contamination in this part of our town, what's happening is that on a project-by-project, property-owner-by-properity-owner basis, we are remediating the soil, we are improving our environment. To me, on the one hand, that's great, and I appreciate the property owners, developers, being willing to shoulder that financial burden. At the same time, what frustrates me, against stepping back, is that we, as a city, have not looked across all of the properties in this area of our town that have contaminated soil. So what's happening on a one-off basis, property-owner-by-property-owner, this is a significant financial burden, and I don't know how the cost will always be spread, whether or not the land is owned outright, or whether there are, you know, other financial burdens carrying costs, et cetera. I wish we had a larger, more comprehensive way to look at our environmental hazards, our soil contamination in this entire area of our city. And perhaps that's a conversation I could have with County EHS or Hillary Howser at Heal the Ocean. But I'm just frustrated, it's as though we're waiting for yet another project to come forward to try to figure out there again how to improve our environmental quality of life. So appreciate the property owner being willing to do it. I know there are some requirements. Let me comment, if I could, about the Urban Creeks Council and their request for 100-foot setback. And this is causing me to reflect back on the Housing Authority's Gardens on Hope project at Isn't That a Royal Borough Creek? And we had, you know, many hours of discussion there. While I am a strong environmentalist, so environmental protection, environmental quality improvements are important to me, they're a strong value of mine, where I have to balance that versus, let me go back to Gardens on Hope, more housing, and in that case, it was for 89 low-income frail seniors. I think we really need to get a reality check on where our priorities are, and if we have to give a little bit on pulling back from some watershed area, in that case, it was a royal borough, here it's Laguna, in order to provide priority development. Now, we don't have housing here, but to a comment that Commissioner Campanella made, and will probably make it again in the fall when the AUD comes back to us, we need to look at, I think, improved balancing of our priorities, rebalancing. And so to me, 100 feet back from this creek is not, even though we don't have housing here, is not quite reasonable. So I wouldn't be in support of 100 foot. I'm in support of the proposed setback that's already been documented. The only change to the conditions of approval that Commissioner Higgins raised, and I appreciate that, Commissioner Higgins, because I've been thinking about that, so this is page two of 20, and I think this is number four, parking demand, and to remove the reference to occupancies, that makes sense to me. That clears up and cleans that up a bit. Now, when I look at the plans themselves, sheet A-900, all other things considered, I think that this Monterey style is going to be an aesthetic and visual improvement to the area. I'm glad that there was not a push for a more ornate Spanish colonial style that we see in El Pueblo Viejo. To me, that would have been really out of place here, and I think would actually have created a look of artifice that would have been, dare I say, Disneyland-like, that we don't want. So to me, this works. And in terms of the corner look, the trellis, yes, it's going to take, I think, quite a bit of ongoing maintenance investment, and I certainly hope that's just part of the property management, because I think it could be a real beautification spot. So I don't know that I have much more else to say. I don't know how else to get more housing in this city. I tell you, I just think about it every day. I know, that sounds kind of pathetic, but that's how important it is. It's important to all of us. The state will make it even more important for us if we don't start to be more strategic and more proactive and more creative. And that means talking with all of the major property owners, all of the major investors, developers, et cetera, to figure out how together to make it financially feasible for the property owners, and so forth, to whether that's rezoning, whether that's a change in a specific plan, whatever is required to start to fold in more housing in areas of our community and in zones and in properties where it hasn't been contemplated in the past. 1983 seems like the dark ages. Now, look how much has changed in our society in every single way since 1983, actually just in the last 10 years. So my plea is for all of us to join together, to creatively figure out how we're going to work together to get more housing in Santa Barbara. And I'm open for any vehicles, any conversations, any summits on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schwartz. I too support the project. I love the architecture. I think Commissioner Jordan combined very eloquently the combination of the environmental aspects of the project and the habitat restoration, which is, I think, very important, the sensitive design, considering we have contaminated soils on the site, the design for perhaps future sea level rise mitigation, and the aesthetics of the project. I think they're all great. I think the landscape plan has gone a long way towards making the project really, really special, and I hope when implemented, I'm equally as pleased as I am with looking at the plan. I like the trellis feature. I think as, from a pedestrian experience, it's going to be, it's going to be really great. You're not staring at cars, you're actually walking through a design space, and I think that the corner plaza area is a really nice feature. The architecture, I think, is well-suited. I'm glad it's not our typical architecture. I like the Monterey style. Congratulations, I think that was absolutely the right choice. And I'd just like to say, before I go back to Commissioner Lodge, who I think wants to make a motion, I'd just like to say that I really, really appreciate the project team's work with the Historic Landmarks Commission, because I think this is a so much better project than what was presented before, just in terms of views and its sensitivity. The design is lovely, and the landscaping's really nice. I just think it's obviously taken a lot of work and probably a lot of expense to get it to this point. But I commend you all and thank the rights for sticking it out and doing that, because I think it's the right way to go, definitely. So.
Was that an intended one?
Oh, no, it wasn't the right way to go, no. You're too sharp for me. I was just about to turn it over to you, so. So Commissioner Lodge, go ahead.
And anybody can make the motion, but anyway, thank you, Madam Chair. Move that the Planning Commission make the findings that begin on page 21 of the Planning Commission's staff report and go through page 23, items A through E, and that we adopt the conditions of approval with the change that was agreed upon between the applicant and staff in, under use limitations, but changing the word occupants on the second page, it's the fifth line down, to tenants.
So you're referring to the revised copy that, and then changed the word occupancies to tenants. Pardon?
Strike it out.
Oh, you just want, you don't want tenants. You just wanted to strike out. So it just says uses. Okay. Is that?
That makes sense, yes.
Okay. So I, that's the motion. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Higgins seconded the motion. Do we have any other discussion? You're smiling. Do we have?
No.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that carries unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Nice work.
Thank you, everybody. Out of order, may I convey a message from the owner? He asked me to read something to you.
Oh, okay.
Bill, listen. On behalf of the family of Jenny and Bill Wright, who own the subject property from the freeway to the tracks on both sides of Garden Streets, congratulations and thank you. You may find it interesting to note that this family has been involved in this property since August 1, 1978, 13 days short of 41 years. And they have been trying to do something first-class for the entrance to this magnificent waterfront of our beautiful city since then. This family that brought you, the same family that brought you the design concept for the Garden Street extension. This is the family that dedicated to the land, to the city, free and clear. They feel strongly that both sides of Garden Street should be for our community, for our visitors, and think that the city and Coastal Commission will strongly support that opinion. It's been the family's dream that this reduced-size visitor-serving and community-serving project that you approved today will be the beginning of that dream. We particularly salute Mayor Sheila Lodge for supporting us through the decades. Congratulations and thank you again. Thanks for letting me do that for Bill. Appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much. Commissioner Lodge, do you have something to say?
It has been a long time, but, well, as I said, it goes back to my second year as mayor, 1983. That was a long, long time ago, but I'm glad to see things moving along and look forward to seeing this project completed.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you for your comments. We really appreciate it. Now, okay. We're.
One more fan.
Thank you for all you've done. Okay, we're going to move on to administrative agenda, which is item number four, 4A. Staff, one is Staff Hearing Officer Liaison Report.
Madam Chair, nothing out of the ordinary to report, but I can move along to Water Commission if you want.
Yes, okay. So announcing a two other committee and liaison reports. Go ahead, Commissioner Jordan.
So Water Commission met today, and the long, extended discussion today was on the sewer lateral inspection program, which you see generating a lot of press and questions out in the community these days. The city's website has been developed and upgraded extensively. You can literally just go to the homepage and type in SLIP, SLIP, and you'll get right to it. It'll be at the top of the search page. But the number of issues with sewer laterals in the city over the past couple of years has blossomed as a result of either blockages, inspections, or additions, so property development, from something like 70 in a year to 850 this year. And of that 800 gain, those 800 people are totally mystified by why this is coming up for the first time in their lives and behind the curve on where you own to, what's your responsibility, and really, we were supposed to take care of that for 60 years. And so the city's doing a real admirable job, I think, in beginning to address that learning curve with its residents. A couple of things I'm, well, a couple of things all the Water Commissioners are pushing the city to do is to work on a pilot, I guess called a pilot program for cost controls, where the city will actually be the bridge to contractors who do this kind of work, so that they either will do like an RFP for some type of base labor rate or base contract scope that handles some of the obvious vanilla applications. Many of the laterals in the city are bizarrely located on hills and small streets, go up and down, cross over county, crisscross with your neighbors, and so those are a little more difficult. But on, say, my house on a flat, level street on the mesa, that's pretty simple to put that into a common pot for a lot of people. And so I look forward to seeing that, because I think that will, if you follow Next Door, you certainly see these threads on, it costs my neighbor 4,000, and it costs me 12,000, and I think I'm getting ripped off by somebody, and there might be some truth to that. I think I'm getting ripped off by somebody, and there might be some, some truth to that. And the other thing we're working on, I hearken back to, Dave Davis actually knew exactly what this was when I talked about it, and that was years and years and years ago, decades ago, there was a CBDG grant to the Community Development Department for habitat and safety improvements on residences for those who are lower income or elderly on fixed, fixed income. And the only reason I know about this program is I have a, a set of neighbors who were in that neighborhood when my grandparents were in that neighborhood, so this is a long time ago. So they're in their 90s, and maybe 10 years ago, they needed a new roof, didn't have the funds to, maybe 20 years ago, didn't have the funds to pay for it. And the city had a, the city had a method to either actually grant them the money if they were at a certain income level, or to give them a 30-year loan at like 2% and attach it to their property taxes. And they put one of those fancy, their, the roofs are all in that part of the mesa somewhat flat, and, and so they put that fancy seam-down vinyl roofing on the, on the, on the roof that will last forever. And that, that, that process went away somewhere, but we're encouraging staff to look for opportunities like that, so these 800 additional notices that are out in the system right now, that we can help those who are on low fixed incomes or those who are just on, in a lower economical standing, actually be able to make these improvements out in their, on their property and out into the public parkway to stop the, the seepages of sewage. So that's probably a process that's going to continue to take place through the end of the year, but looking forward to seeing that. And it's, it's, what's amazing is little or no talk about this a couple of years ago, and now I can't log onto Next Door without seeing some chatter about it. And we had a bunch of people in the room today for public comment. Usually, we're talking to a room like this with nobody in the pews, so I know it's of concern out there, and from an outreach standpoint, and hopefully from a future financial assistance standpoint, I think the city's moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Just as a comment on that, when I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission, we've got, we got lots of requests to remove trees because of sewer lateral problems. So I know they're out there, and, and just terribly frustrated homeowners and frustrated with the costs and how do I do it and whose responsibility is it? And so a real education process would be very helpful on that, I think. So I'm glad the city is working towards that. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you. I was at a meeting of the Sustainable, Sustainability Committee, made up of three city council members. At that meeting, the city council is going to be, get a recommendation that they receive a report and subsequently adopt the city's strategic energy plan. And this is to address priorities of increased electrical grid reliability, enhance disaster resiliency, promote local economic development, and decrease local greenhouse gas emissions. And that's going to be done by staffing, have a formalized energy and climate program, community choice, energy implementation, to be self-sufficient, climate cooperative, education and outreach, doing example projects, and permit streamlining. And that's going to be recommended for adoption, this whole strategy. Secondly, the city is going to have actually a progress report on sustainability that's been put together, and it's going to be put both on the city website and may even be done now, or a two-page flyer. We saw an extended copy of the report, actually show the progress that's being made community-wide for various aspects of energy conservation and sustainability, not just the city, but also other projects that are underway and endeavors that are making, being made by the entire community. And then lastly, currently, there are electric vehicle charging stations in 10 of the public garages, and fleet parking has eight chargers. They have, it's going to be recommended to the city council to work on 30 more stations at the Granada Garage and another 14 stations for the fleet. And this is going to be done with a company called ChargePoint, largest network in the country, and taking advantage of Southern Cal Edison rebates, where Southern Cal Edison would actually support the infrastructure, all of the conduit, all of the tie-ins to their transformers, and cover most of that cost for those that actually do put EV chargers in, in larger-scale projects like this. And then, so it's going to be very efficient and expand it in a period when we're seeing a lot more electric vehicles. So that's, that also will be recommended to the city council. Thank you.
Do you want to talk about last evening? Yeah, just briefly.
I, I think Jessica Metzger and staff did a great job of compiling information and details and suggestions that were obtained at the first meeting in April. On this, this is to look at really Phase Two.
AUD, yeah.
AUD. What items would people like to see, what changes would they like to see, particularly in the area of downtown and parking? And the results there were, you know, they had parking recommendations where people supported in Lufthes instead of onsite parking, unbundled parking was favorable, and, and other items that were suggested that I think was a good community involvement, and will be putting those together, and I presume coming to us next to take a look at it, I hope before going to the city council. But two things came to mind out of that meeting last night, two takeaways. One is, and I've said this before, the evening meeting really gets people out, and you get a wider variety and a broader variety of the community who are affected. And we've spoken about this before, but especially this topic, Phase Two, when it comes before us, that we do hold an evening meeting. You know, it's, they started at 6:00 and there were a couple hundred people there, and it really worked out well. The other thing is where we play our role, okay? Because there's a lot of information that needs to be gone through, looked at, what about this, what about that, what the impact is, and what the impact is on, on projects that are, have been proposed, et cetera. That doesn't take place at a forum like that where you're taking information, nor does it take place at city council, okay? To the same depth, I think, there's public comments, but we look at it deeper. And just hopefully, we'll have a chance to delve deeper and try to make things work, not only for the community, but also for the developers and property owners. So I look forward to that coming to us, and with, really appreciative of the advanced work that staff get, had in putting that together, relatively short timeframe to turn that data around and get it to us, and hopefully it's coming to us in the next couple of months for our review. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Campanella. Yes, a number of us attended the workshop last night, and it was, it was very well-attended, I thought. Commissioner Lodge, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add that this information from the previous workshop and from last night's will all be available by, I hope to have it on by Monday. That was the last that I saw. So anybody who wants to see what, what happened there, you can find it online on the city's website.
That, the website, by the way, has been really well-expanded to contain a lot of information.
Yes.
And informative information, including the videos and presentation, videos of prior meetings, and actually the presentation and support material. So it's very well-done by staff. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Not to go back to item number three, but I did fail to mention the appeal period, and no one nudged me, so. The, our, the decision made by the Planning Commission at 301 East Yanana Alley is appealable to city council within 10 days. So I just want to get that into the record. We have no meeting on August 1st, and our next regular meeting will be August 8th. And thank you all, and we are adjourned.